Number six of two thousand and twenty-five and all regular bills. If there are no corrections or questions.
I'll make a motion accepted considering agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There any department heads that want to speak at this time? Kristen?
All right, Kristen Porth, Wyndham Ambulance Director. The Wyndham Ambulance had received an award about two weeks ago for two thousand and twenty-four. It's a certificate of clinical excellence, so just wanted to bring that to the council to show you guys. There, it's based on an eighty percent performance on certain measures that they, the state watches for all the services in the state of Minnesota. So we have gotten this many years, so we're continuing to get that award. I will have a couple of things on the regular agenda, so I'll cover that at that time. And then a couple other projects we'll be working on coming up will be, I'll come eventually to council for upgrading our iPads. They're getting to be about seven years old and battery life is getting pretty down there. And that'll probably be maybe connected with our cell phones and Wi-Fi things, but that'll be a future endeavor. And then I am a third assistant chief for Wyndham Fire Department, and I just wanted to remind the community that we'll be having our Community Appreciation Day at our emergency services facility, which is over on Fifth Avenue on Saturday, May seventeenth, eleven to three P M. We're gonna have a meal from eleven to two P M. That will be burgers, hot dogs with a cookie, chips and water. It'll be a free will donation, and then we have our annual raffle drawing on the seventeenth as well at one P M at our building. So we still have raffle tickets for anybody that's still interested in them. Contact one of the fire department members and hope to see community members at this event.
Thank you, Kristen. Congrats on the award. Does anyone have anything for Kristen? Then congratulations. Any other department heads?
For the airport, all the runway markings got repainted and the other taxiway markings got repainted. And that was on the expense of the state of Minnesota. They do it every so often. The contractor was gonna come in the fall, but they had an opening in their schedule and our airport manager got them fit in and got that completed. So thank you for that. We're also gonna be painting the inside of the arrival departure building. That building is now twenty years old. It needs a fresh coat of paint on the inside. Quotes were solicited for that. Lori Cole Painting is going to do it, and she wants to donate her labor in honor of her father, John Lockett. And so you'll see a donation resolution coming to your next meeting, but that project will also be underway. So just wanna let you know what's going on at the airport.
Any other department heads? Okay, up next is public comment, Wyndham Area Chamber of Commerce, Darcy Jones.
Good evening, everyone. It's Darcy Jones with the Wyndham Chamber. I just wanted to come and talk to everyone tonight a little bit about Riverfest. And I'm just hoping you'll kind of hear me out on a couple of things. And just looking for some collaboration from the city and then the chamber together. So as everyone knows, Riverfest is a very big prided event in Wyndham. It brings a lot of people to town. We bring a lot of visitors. Our businesses skyrocket, I feel like, like our restaurants, our gas stations, our hotels, all that good stuff. We bring people to town, I wanna say between six thousand probably to eight thousand people. And we bring a lot of activities and events to town as well, as well as like entertainment. We bring bands, we do the fireworks, all the good stuff. I guess what I would like to ask or see is, I am a one staff person at the chamber, and I do not want to see Riverfest go away. However, as everyone knows, inflation has happened. Prices go up and logistics and everything. I cannot keep doing it alone. So my reason today is to come and ask to see if I can get some help from other departments as well as from the city to see if we can work together in other aspects, to see if we can get some volunteers and maybe if we can get some funding options as well. Is there anything that you would like to say, Cassandra? Oops. I did do a slide. I didn't know if I needed to bring all that or not to kind of share with you guys. Is there just the presentation slide PowerPoint? There you go. So I labeled it as Riverfest, and I know I only have a couple more minutes, but you can click to the next slide. And our mission from the Wyndham Chamber is we promote, we unite, and we develop. So we try to bring people to town, and when we do, we try to promote them as far as events, activities. We bring people together. And I feel like events is one of our bigger things too. But again, being one staff and a part of a board, we can only do so much delegating and so many tasks, and you can only do so many things. And I do feel too like with the wants and the needs of the community, I can only do so much. And then the next slide is the Riverfest purpose. So Riverfest is designed to bring people to town from all over. It's a big community event that brings pride, love, laughter, smiles. And it's what people in the community look forward to year in and year out. And especially for me, being a native in Wyndham, that is something that I look forward to, to bring my kids to, something for the whole community to come out to and enjoy and not have to worry about anything else. I feel like it's a great time to bring the kids out and let them just have fun. On the next slide, I was kind of proposing how Riverfest aligns with our mission. Like I said, we promote businesses. So when we do Riverfest, we bring people to town. So they will use our restaurants, they use our gas stations, they use our local hotels. That is part of our mission. And then we engage. We like to bring people to town to engage them in our activities. They go to our retailers, they go and just engage in the community, figure out what the community is about. And then we have leadership collaboration. We try to collaborate with our businesses and leaders in the community. And then if you want to go to the next slide, I have the city of Wyndham. The city of Wyndham, you guys also do community engagement. You try to get people engaged in the community to keep the community running and investing in the community. As far as like economic growth and developing it, there's also public safety that you guys give to us and being part of the city. And then on the next slide, how that those kind of align with Riverfest and how I feel that the city provides the community engagement, the public safety, the infrastructure and the economy. And on the next slide, I have some key points on there as far as like what Riverfest and the chamber kind of do together. And I wanted just to come, like I said, to see if we could get some staffing, some volunteer, and possibly some funding and what that solution could look like for us. And I think there's one more slide. Again, I just kind of aligned our strengths and our weaknesses. Our strength is we promote, we unite, we engage, we collaborate. And one of our weaknesses is the logistics of it, being one staff and not having the funding to do that. And the next one, again, our proposal is just to seek some funding models with the city, see if we can work together and collaborate, what the chamber can do and what we could do as a committee together. And the next one, we can skip the roles. And then I just wanna again thank everybody for tonight, thanking your time. And I want to thank everybody for being a part of Riverfest. We couldn't do it without everybody's help. And again, just here to see and seek out for some support and some help. So, thank you.
I would, excuse me, I'd like to comment a little bit on that also, like as far as what some of the stuff I believe she's looking for is either volunteerism or some help like moving the picnic tables around the square. When you got an event on one night, on one side of the square and then to get them to the other food trucks on the other day, there's nobody there to move them but Darcy. And putting up the cross gates for when the parade comes down. The street department puts them out and they do a great job of doing that, but then that's where they sit. That's we gotta try to find somebody that'll put them up or take them down. I mean, she's just looking for a little bit of help from either the city or the citizens of Wyndham. If we could talk to people from the neighborhoods or something, if we just get somebody to come in and talk to you about it. So I think that's some of the stuff you're looking for and engaging in, so with that, I ask for your help.
And then there's also the talk we can have about what the city could do to join helping on the, on the funding side. So that's something we can talk about too. I don't know if right now, but, but not too long from now.
Does anyone else have anything for Darcy?
I will stop in and connect with you. I'm happy to help move tables, set up barricades, solicit help, just like you, I'll send my kids down there. But I'll connect, I mean, there's enough of them. We could move some barricades. But I thank you for all of your work in this. I went to one meeting and it was about three hours long and I was like, oh boy. You do need a lot of help. And then we met after that, and I think I'd love to sit down after Riverfest and kind of see where you guys are at and what role, you know, maybe we can just try to solicit some more volunteers. And I don't know, I mean, we'll have to see what council comes up with as far as any potential funding. I don't know much about that right now, but I know that I can help with volunteers, so let's connect after Riverfest again. Yeah, thank you guys for all you do.
I appreciate it.
Likewise.
All right. Now we are on to proclamations. And we will start with National Hospital Week. And Jenny will read that one for us.
I would like to introduce the National Hospital Week proclamation.
I'm sorry. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we do the roll call now? Oh, sorry. You'll read that?
Okay. City of Wyndham, two thousand and twenty-five National Hospital Week proclamation. Whereas National Hospital Week is May eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, we are healthcare, hashtag we are healthcare, stands with more than five thousand other U.S. hospitals in providing quality patient care to all Americans, hashtag Hospital Week. And whereas individuals all across the country will celebrate this event. And whereas our hospital and healthcare workers represent care, community and comfort. And whereas the hardworking people who compose our hospital deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that in recognition of this event, the City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May eleventh through the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five as National Hospital Week. The mayor and city council encourage the community members to express their appreciation with a sincere thank you to all the dedicated people who provide the skill, facilities, and technology that make trustworthy, reliable, quality patient healthcare possible in our community, adopted by this council this sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five.
End roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
And there we have it. This is National Hospital Week, and I believe we have Jessica Schmidt here on hand from the hospital to accept this. Thank you. Next up is the City of Wyndham, Minnesota, two thousand and twenty-five EMS Week proclamation. And we'll need a introduction for that resolution and a second.
I introduce the National EMT Week, EMS Week.
I will second.
All right, introduced by Benson, second by Quaid. Whereas emergency medical services are vital public services. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skill. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that the City Council, in recognition of this event, with the theme "We Care for Everyone", does hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The mayor and the city council encourage the community to observe this week with a sincere thank you to all of our dedicated emergency medical services members, adopted by the City Council this sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
There we have it. And we have another proclamation of National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And Councilmember Sherman will read that for us.
I'd like to introduce this proclamation recognizing law enforcement officers.
I'll second it.
Whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas there are more than one million two hundred and eighty thousand law office enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the full-time, uniformed law enforcement officers serving in Wyndham, Minnesota. And whereas members of law enforcement deserve the appreciation and respect of the people of Wyndham, Minnesota for the merit, dignity, bravery and reliability they exhibit each and every day. We must also honor the sacrifices made by families of police officers, as each day they must face constant fear as their loved ones work to protect us. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants who made the ultimate sacrifice are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas Minnesota's fallen officers will never be forgotten, nor will their service to their respective communities. By choosing to commit themselves to law enforcement, these brave individuals answered the call for service and willingly put their lives in jeopardy. We commend them for recognizing service as a noble career and protecting the public safety. And also recognize all of those who are serving without incident to date. Whereas the city of Wyndham and all Minnesota citizens have turned to members of law enforcement for assistance and support in times of distress, whether they are coping with a personal crisis or struggling through civil disorder or a natural disaster. Our communities rely on these courageous individuals when it is difficult to stand on our own. And we are indebted to the unwavering public service of our local and state police. We are indeed fortunate and grateful for the contributions of law enforcement officers to the people of this community and state. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota, that the City Council, in recognition of this event, publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community as well as those of our state and nation, and honors officers who place their lives on the line for the safety and security of their communities. The mayor and city council encourage the community to recognize all our dedicated law enforcement officers with a sincere thank you, adopted by the council the sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five.
Roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Great. All great proclamations. Those are all very important things, and we thank you all. What's that? Scott, would you like to come and accept this? All right, up next is the two thousand and twenty-five Street Project. And are we gonna have Dan and John? And I'm not sure who's with Dan, someone with Dan, Bryce. Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Viscapen, DGR Engineering. Bryce Hunt is also with me. He's gonna help take notes and make sure we keep track of everything that's going on. Steve is bringing up the preliminary assessment plat and schedule that we have created for this project. Homeowners and residents adjacent to the alleyways have received mailing from the city that includes just their portion of the assessment process. So we'll, we'll talk about in detail that. I've got a small summary, just to kind of summarize the project, go through how things were done and what was done and what we're planning on doing. Hopefully knock off some of the simpler questions, and then obviously we'll have time for everybody to weigh in and discuss what, what and how this affects their particular properties and situations. So again, my name is Dan Viscapen, DGR Engineering. Thank you guys for inviting me today to discuss this project with you. We're going to talk about the assessments are for the alleys, the alley between Tenth and Eleventh Street from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue, as well as the alley between Eighth Street from Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue. The alley improvement project has been needed and identified by the City Street Review Committee, which is assessed every five years. These project segments were discussed by the street committee and the council and for the past couple of months and identified in a feasibility study completed by DGR just recently in March, which we went over during that council meeting. Steve, if you'd bring up the maps toward the end. Let's see if this works on the screen. Nope, that's not any help. All right. Yep, no, that's okay. Nope, that's all right. Anyway, the description that I just gave, again, there's a two-block alley section from Third Avenue to Fifth Avenue on the first page. And then on the next one, it's a single block between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue for that segment. These two segments of, or it's actually three blocks of alley are existing alleys with approximately an inch to two and a half inches of existing asphalt bituminous pavement, combination of asphalt and some of its chip seal over a granular base. The surface is not uniform and there's significant spider cracking and potholing throughout these alleys, making the drainage worse, which obviously makes the pavement worse over, over time as the, as the water freezes and thaws in those potholes. The project's scope that we're planning on doing, it would be to remove the existing pavement through all three of those alleys, as can be seen there. Install new fifteen-inch storm sewer coming from the low end. So in both of these cases, coming from Third Avenue, we'll replace the storm sewer. Put fifteen-inch storm sewer, run that down the center of the alley. That storm sewer will be connected to roof drains in the alley, so the adjacent roof drains will be connected to that storm sewer. The storm sewer costs for the main and the roof drains that are directly adjacent to the alley. So if they butt up right, if your building is directly butted up right to the alley, right up against the hatch portions, those would be connected as part of the process without being assessed. There will be a time that we will talk to you. There's certain properties that have roof drains that are off the alley by a significant portion. In some cases, the alley or the drive between the two is paved. So there would be additional cost above and beyond what is directly adjacent to the alley. This is due to the fact that it is private property, so the city project couldn't go past that point without the homeowner and/or resident agreeing to the contractor doing that work, as well as agreeing to the cost to do that work in whole. So from the edge of the alley, basically at that point, it would become the prop, the property owner's cost. Then we would complete subgrade, subgrade compaction for twelve inches and then twelve inches of granular base and then putting four inches of bituminous paving over the alley. This will also include at the interface with the streets of Third, Fourth and Fifth. At each one, it'll include replacing the sidewalks to ADA slopes coming in and out. Some of them don't match right now, and you have to go a little bit past, as well as the, the drive, the concrete portion of the driveway just outside of the sidewalk. So basically what's there in concrete will replace those, make them ADA compliant for the sidewalks that are crossing, and then replace the driveway for the portions that aren't sidewalk. All of these things will be done as part of the project. The, the result of this will be a project life of the alley estimated to be twenty to twenty-five years. Kept in good condition with maintenance, seal coats over time and things like that. It can last up to forty years as part of that, that renewable pavement process. The results of this would be an improved drainage project, which will save the new pavement and make it last longer, as well as a smoother ride for those utilizing those alleys. Special areas of concern that we will look at throughout the project process is the safety and traffic control. Will maintain vehicle emergency access at all times. Access will be limited during the utility underground work, as well as the subgrade preparation until they get to paving. So that will limit the local adjacent business owners will have to have, have barricades on each side of the project, and it will limit how, how you can get in and out. As the contractor gets done with graining, then there'll be some limited access. Again, it won't be perfect access because there'll be drop-offs at the ends before they get it paved. But you, there will be granular base that they'll be able to give you a certain amount of access, but it'll be limited not to overnight paving. The business access, well, the contractor will use the existing bituminous material, grind it up, and he'll use that to try to get, again, that limited access throughout the project. But it won't be full-time access and it will be spotty. Garbage and recycling pickup. Garbage and recycling pickup will be varied during construction, depending on when, where we're at, so they might have to be moved to closer to the edges of the alleys. We'll have to talk with the, with the recycling firms to make sure that we have locations for those, and there's ways for the residents to get their garbage equipment to and from those locations where they can be picked up. Next, the, this project will be paid for by a combination of city funding and special assessments to the, to the adjacent residents. The cost was distributed by front and side footage, so the frontages that are shown on these maps are distances received from the county and verified off of the plating documents. The front, street address of the, the front is the street address or the opposite, the street address in this case to the alley, so the, it'd be, generally, it's the narrower version of it, but it would be the portion that's adjacent to the alley would be the front or the, and then the side would be the opposite of that. On the alleys that were going straight through this one, they would all be frontages. On the next one, for 50 and 51, the portion going north and south would be a side alley versus a frontage alley. So that's where those two would be affected. You'd be paying for 100% of the one going to the east and west, and the north and south one would be 50% of that. The city portion of this project will be paid for by city bonds, and the resulting assessment portion is approximately 30 to 35% of the project. So the city portion would be 65 to 70% of the project. The homeowners or the residents' portion is approximately 30 to 35, and directly assessed, which in this case is approximately $340,000 that the local residents would be paying for. The total estimated project cost that the city would be undertaking is $990,000. So that includes the storm sewer portions that are not assessed, and half of the project that is assessed, or excuse me, half of the project that is not assessed to the city, or to the residents will go to the city. In summary, the alley review project has been needed and identified by the city for street and review assessments. Interest rates, while recently slightly higher, are still historically favorable for a project and available for funding of the project. Reduce cost and inconvenience by performing the full-depth bituminous option instead of another option. A bituminous overlay is not feasible in this case because of the underground utilities that need to happen, and because of the poor condition of the existing asphalt would not allow for an overlay to give much long-term use. And the concrete reconstruction option would be more expensive by 20 to 30%, and would also have the roads inaccessible for another two, two to four weeks throughout the construction season due to the fact that it takes that much longer to do the construction. The life expectancy of the overall completed project is 20 to 30 years with proper maintenance. It could be even longer with crack sealing and chip, and chip seal coating. We anticipate a good bid, as this year is not quite as hot in the market as far as projects being bid, so we anticipate there's contractors available and willing to do the work, and are excited to have a successful project. Communication throughout the project will be extremely important, keeping everybody informed. We'll have newsletters weekly throughout the construction project to tell people how the project is going. That'll be posted online, and DGR will do that, and it'll be included on the city's Facebook page as well. That is the summary of the project. I'm not sure if you have to officially open the...
Does Council have any questions? We'll open the public hearing. So if anybody wants to speak on this, you can walk to the podium, state your name and the address of your property that you want to speak on, and then... Three minutes, about three minutes.
My name's Luanne Pigman.
There we go.
You're turning green. All right. And this is my partner, Kevin Briscoe. We own the USDA building at 933 Ninth Street. I guess I have about three questions for you, if we could. First one, there was some mention of curb and gutter. I take it that's just to replace the curb and gutter that's, that's there now? You're not putting in a bunch of new curb and gutter?
Correct. In fact, there's very little curb and gutter. There's a couple of segments that we have to do where we're matching up to the road, and we're running that storm sewer through, so there'll just be a 10 or 12-foot panel of curb and gutter that has to be replaced to get those utilities through those segments.
Next thing is your storm sewer. Is that storm sewer in there now on, between Third and Fourth?
Between Third and Fourth, there's not. So we will be connecting into 8th Street and Third Avenue for the storm sewer, and bringing that storm sewer up to provide better drainage for the new pavement so that it lasts longer than it currently does.
You've got three to four feet of fall between Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue.
Correct.
Why do you need a storm sewer?
Because the storm sewer will pick that up and take it out of the subdrains, so we'll have subdrain as well, so that granular base that's underneath the pavement, it'll take that water out of that subdrain so that it doesn't sit and freeze and thaw, and it'll help the pavement.
15-inch tile?
The 15-inch will be for the storm sewer runoff, so that's for the, that goes in top of the grates, and then the, what'll be in that grade below is four-inch.
Where are you, where are you putting grates in that alley?
There's gonna be two grates. There'll be one, basically just at the low end of Third Avenue there, just before the concrete, and then we'll put one right at the end of the storm sewer, which is just before it goes to the north there where that second tier is.
More than enough fall for that water to run right down that alley, which is what it's going to do anyway, isn't it? Why, why, why go through the extra expense of putting in 15-inch tile?
Because...
Catch water on Third Avenue when it runs out the alley, right?
Correct.
Okay. So why put the, why put the block of, of storm sewer in?
Because it picks up the storm water sooner, it gets the roof drains directly in. If you look at some of the roof drains that are currently there, where that falls down on the pavement, it actually erodes the top of the pavement, and that actually increases the stress on the pavement. It lasts longer if you have the storm sewer to connect into.
Okay.
And again, just to reiterate, the storm sewer portion of this is not assessed, so the costs are only for the pavement that you're replacing. The storm sewer portion is, is part of the city portion of the cost of the project.
All right.
You gotta understand, all that water from here, it's gotta go around the corner and actually go down a half-block to the actual catch bases.
Okay. Then why the four inches of asphalt? Is it normal about three? You put an inch and a half and an inch and a half?
So the question I've been asked is if we can overlay this. That's come up a few times for cost reasons.
I can un, I can understand you wanting to tear out the existing and put a decent base in, that, that's, just makes sense, but...
So...
Why, why going extra heavy with the asphalt?
What we're doing intentionally is doing four inches, because that's the minimum if you want to do a rehab in 30 years. When you get to that point, if you have four inches, you can actually mill that top inch and a half to two inches, whatever you decide to pay for at that time, and not re-completely do all the way down to the base again. So the goal is to create a perpetual pavement here that you won't have to go through all this expense that we're unfortunately having to go through now if you have the additional pavement thickness currently, and then when you do that in the future, you should be able to mill down, replace just a little bit of the top. We're already gonna have the utilities done, that utility is going to be a 100-year solution, so it'll last through multiple pavement sections.
Guys, if we could, I don't mean to cut you off, but if it's, we're over three minutes.
That's fine.
You can come back up if we can just let somebody else come up, and then you can come back up. If there's anybody else that wants, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's fine.
I'm, it's hard for me to do, to cut you off, I promise. Just hang on for a second, we'll see who else wants to come up, and then if you want to, come back up.
Okay.
Anybody else? Go ahead. State your name and property address.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lacan and my husband Joel Lacan, and we have 314, 326, and 328, 10th Street. Will there be an opportunity to do any of our private property that butts up to the alley?
Yes, that would be very appropriate and good timing, so... There's a couple of properties that actually are currently managed and/or maintained by the city as well, that they're also doing it. Those assessments went out, but anybody else that would be willing to do that, that would make the project look significantly better over time and, and obviously last better for everyone, so we will be in touch with those and get you costs for those kind of things to add.
Sounds good. And I just appreciate all the communication, as I have deliveries to that back door for flowers, and I know I'll have to re-figure all that stuff and dumpsters and...
And you'll be able to connect right into the main drain with the, with the gutters? Oh, but I, because we're, we're ways away from the...
Can you go up to the, the other? Yes, so your drains will be, be able to connect to directly in. The only thing, that's where I'm, I'm hesitating, I believe your back drains might be off the alley quite a ways.
They are.
So we will be contacting you with those additional costs to reconnect those, but we can connect them to where they'll drain directly down into the ground, and you won't see them past where they come down off your downspouts.
Great. This gets very icy back there and very hazardous, so that'd be good.
And again, just to be clear, that the city's portion that they pay for will be up against where the property line is for the city, and then past that, we will talk to you about those additional costs and what that would be, and then obviously if you were planning on doing the paving anyway, that'll be already included, so...
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to come up? Here we go.
My name's Jeremy Jansen. I own the property at 1044 Third Avenue, under Minnesota Investment Properties. Couple of questions I had, I guess, in the feasibility study. Where did these projects take costs out of the equation? Where did these projects come in as a matter of priority? I just think of First Avenue from like Navy Bank on South. I mean, that is just terrible, and I'm just wondering how much bang for the buck are we getting with how many people use this alleyway, I guess?
I guess I can take that as the street committee. We were looking at what, this was a priority. I mean, our main priority is yes, First Avenue from McDonald's all the way out to Elite, that is definitely our highest priority, but as far as timing-wise with all the different businesses and things we had to notify and get the bids out and timeline on it, we couldn't get all that done to get that done this year. So that is our next-year project. And so being able to get this alley, that's what we could get accomplished this year, so that's why the alley got moved to this year, because we could get that in the timeframe that we could do. It was a smaller project, less people to notify and get it accomplished, so that we could say we got something done. We have so many street things to get done, we were like, we want to see that we get going on something this year, so we can say we're moving. But next year definitely is that First Avenue project, and then on our radar definitely is that Hy-Vee out River Road. We know that that's another one of our high priorities, but that's the highest cost one, and so we're looking for funding options for that, otherwise that would have been definitely our next priority. So that's why this little project got moved to the top.
And then from my understanding, I'm just gonna point up here, like the parking lot, the paved portion, so part of that's, yeah, that area right there. I have people that park there that I, I have to threaten to tow them all the time. I pay to maintain that also, so my question is, can you guys just do that and then assess me for it on my, on private property?
I think he's asking the same question, I think Shannon asked if they can get the contractor to do that work and he pay for it.
No, I got, I'm getting assessed for it. My understanding is...
Oh, hi, his is already...
That one is assessed, okay.
I, I didn't understand the question, I'm really sorry. So yours is being assessed, they, they want it...
They want it done.
Theirs to be added.
I'm questioning what, why I should have to have it done, or required to have it done.
Have to? Did you talk about this already?
Yep, that's the phone.
Yep.
Call we had and everything. Use your mic. Pull up the chair. So as I understand, you can opt out of it? Am I wrong?
It's pub, it's pub, it's a private piece, so yes, you could opt out.
Okay, I didn't get anything, information on being able to opt out. I've talked to John a little bit when I brought it up to his attention, so that's just my question, because in reality, if, if I would say no, I don't want to, that whole second row parking along Ivan's garage, you're not gonna be able to access, access that from the other side. So I'm already looking at a huge cost in, in that building with the roof and everything else, so another, you know, 30 grand in assessments, I don't see the benefit of it for me, but I understand the benefit for the other businesses along there, so...
I know yours, your spot's pretty poor shape too and everything, so I mean, it's an option, so like I said, like you said before, the building really isn't worth it, and if you're gonna get another 16 grand above and beyond and everything, it's gonna put you deeper in the hole, so that's an option.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I don't know, Dennis Rick, I don't know who that, or, he's got sidewalk along that side? How is that determined on who to have sidewalk over? This is sidewalk, right?
I understand.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any side entrances to that building that are used, or?
There's three of them.
Yep.
And we're still determining what, what pavement we're gonna put there, whether we replace, there's sidewalk there currently, so that's where we, we have it shown as being assessed as sidewalk. It may be asphalt or just at the, just at the entrances be concrete and then asphalt everywhere else, we haven't determined that yet.
Okay. I was just wondering, so I have a side entrance in the build, my building, if I'm gonna use that, it'd be nice to have sidewalk, I guess, if it's the same price.
It's not the same price.
It's assessed the same price.
Is it in the alley?
Yeah. It's assessed the same price on the calculations. I took, I took this total assessment, divided by 124, took my assessment on 104, it's the same price.
Correct, but do you currently have sidewalk there?
No, I do not.
So we're replacing the same thing that's currently there is the reason we did it.
Okay.
Now, again, if there's a difference in cost, if you'd be willing to look at that, that, I don't know if I was really clear about that earlier, sorry, I'm not cutting into your time, I apologize, but I did want to mention to everybody, the, the number that you've received is based off of estimates. The number you will be paying on will actually be based off the contractor's number, and our estimate that you've received now is the most you will possibly pay. So if the contractor's numbers come in under what we said, or what we anticipated, your numbers, your actual assessment will be lowered by that same percentage based on whatever the contractor's actual costs are, so... Point being is, if you wanted to add sidewalk, we could figure the difference between the two, but that would obviously cost slightly different.
I didn't know there was sidewalk there, I didn't pay that close attention to it, so that's why I was just wondering, so... So when we, the people that would want to either opt in or opt out, they want to opt in, when would we know the true cost and what the contractor comes back with, if we wanted to like opt in on some of these other, like my part that I don't know if I want done?
Um, it's gonna be within 10%, so I, again, I'm not saying it's gonna go to half.
It isn't gonna be much.
It's not gonna be, we generally estimate reasonably close. We're trying to be on the high side of close though, so again, I would anticipate it coming down a hair, but it's gonna probably be within 10% would be all likelihood. We could re-discuss this with you at that time after the contractor, but I mean, it's not gonna be like half. There's, there's a very unlikely world that that would ever happen, you know what I mean?
Well, you make it sound really good, so...
I didn't mean to sound bad, but I apologize.
You make it sound better than 10%, so...
Excuse me.
That, that's all I had, I guess, and if I can opt out, I may choose to do that, or how do I do that, I guess? Just get old John. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Luanne, would you like to come back up? Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Luanne, well, that's fine.
I'm Cassandra Lustfield. I own the property at 332 10th Street, and I haven't received any notification, and I don't know if it's something with possibly an address issue, since my LLC owns the property, but I haven't received any letters or notice or any, how the, my assessments or anything is gonna be affected, so I'm just wondering who I need to talk to to make sure you have the proper contact for me. And also wondering when, excuse me, when you're going to be coming into the businesses that have, because I don't think my gutters go all the way down either. So wondering when you're going to be coming in and talking to these businesses to give them what their cost is going to be that they would have to do for this.
So we're still working through the design on those, so that's basically what we were waiting for. It'll be a team between myself and the city, John, whether we go before we bid it or after we bid it. Because obviously, again, we'll be going off of estimated cost when I give you a number right now. Once we get back here back from the contractor, it'll be real. So anything I would give you now would be an estimate and then we'd have to work through whatever changes in cost would be based on the bid. So if you want more time, we could certainly do that beforehand. If if it helps to actually know the actual numbers instead of getting, you know what I mean? That's what we're kind of weighing right now.
Right. It would be nice to get the estimates and so then I can see, because I haven't gotten anything yet.
Thank you for that feedback. And then what was your name again? I'm sorry.
Cassandra Lustfield. I own the Ford and Lustfield Law Office.
And then you said three thirty-two Tenth?
Yes.
You're right next to Mari's building, aren't you?
Next to Shannon's.
Next to Shannon.
On the west side.
I was going to look at the map and see what the county had for taxpayer.
The one that is next to me is like on the other side.
Yep.
Is like, I'm in between Shannon's and OK Boss.
Yep.
So JCHB?
JCHB.
Yeah, that's my LLC that owns it. And so I don't know if there was, there might have been an address.
Yeah.
That was wrong.
We use the county, what's listed for the county taxes. But we can try to, is there a better place that we can send that? I don't, maybe you don't need that on public. Maybe we should contact.
Yeah, I can write it down for them.
We don't put that in the public record, but, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that the one that just changed hands not that long ago?
Yeah, I purchased it in twenty twenty-three from Hannah and Ford.
So it shouldn't have changed already?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? Luanne? And Kevin? Not Kevin?
Just one more quick question for you. We have that alley that's running north and south. Okay, all right. We have a building that has that alley running north and south. Has anyone considered just closing that alley off? That alley was used when Smith Appliance was there. It's really not used. The only people that would use it is the people that lease our building from us. They can come in from the east or the west all the time anyway.
I've got one of your tenants that is very adamant on having all avenues open. She's in the back side and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know who you're talking about. Is there any chance, if I convince you otherwise, we could close that off?
I guess on the maintenance side of it and everything, I wouldn't mind having it closed off because of trying to plow it and everything else, it's kind of a pain in the butt. I guess that's something the county and the street committee, council and the street committee have to.
While I have you here, may I ask what you would replace it with instead of pavement, just out of curiosity for maintenance and trying to get something to?
For right now, if you blocked it off at the backside of the sidewalk so people can get through, you'd have to level that sidewalk out, of course.
So basically just put a curb in there?
Put a curb in there and flatten the sidewalk and then just leave it asphalt just the way it is.
Councilperson Quaid, did you have any other thoughts on that? Or Dennis?
I guess if you're talking about not utilizing it, would you be also talking about? Trying to come up with a phrase.
Well, a number of years ago, or just few years ago, there was some discussion about closing that off and then purchasing, you know, part of it and making use of it, you know, so we each owned half of it or something like that.
Steve, what's that called?
Who are you talking about?
When you.
So you're talking about vacating an alley?
Vacating the alley. Are you talking about vacating it or one property on each side splits?
Typically, that's what's done with the alley is half goes to each property typically.
Right.
Yeah, you know, the the building to the to the west of us that they've got some apartments, they could use that for parking, whatever. It doesn't doesn't make too much difference. But the thing doesn't get used, or very seldom anyway, you know, so. It's just I have to convince one person. Yeah.
And then I was just going to clarify, by vacating it, if you leave the existing pavement that's in poor condition, obviously, whatever would happen to that in the future would be based on whatever those property owners chose to do. And I just want to make that clear just going forward, that that would be part of the consequence of that, that there would be no city help with that portion later either.
Correct.
Okay. Not for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this? Joel? Yep.
Do you have fifteen years? And like an interest rate idea on?
Yeah, I can probably answer that for you. Typically, council will do that when the project is finished that we know what the exact cost is. But based on other projects we've done, we do about two percent over what we bond for. And right now, the bonding market is in that four, four and a quarter range, so we'd probably be at six, six and a quarter on it. The last street project, I believe we, the council chose to go out fifteen years on. And there's some sizable assessments in this as well, so that would likely be our recommendation again. But as a property owner, you have the ability to pay that off at any time and stop that interest payment. So you can either pay it all upfront once the project is complete or in year whatever to whatever, pay it off. And then the interest quits accruing at that point, so.
If you add a work outside the scope, like on her three properties, would that, could that be in part of that or that be paid separately?
Bad mic. Typically, that's not part of the assessment portion of it because it's extra work outside the public right of way, and so we don't do assessments on private work, so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? Is there anything from council? Do you guys have anything else?
No, I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
So do we now need an introduction to the resolution ordering improvement and preparation of plans for the twenty twenty-five street improvement project? Oh, I'm sorry, we have to close the public hearing. Good call, Jason. So now we would take an introduction to the resolution ordering improvement and preparation of plans for the twenty twenty-five street improvement project.
I'll introduce that resolution.
I'll second it.
Introduced by Dennis, second by Scott. Any discussion?
Do we need to, can we move forward with that or do we need to talk about that little alleyway thing at this point or do we do that later?
Yeah, I mean, that kind of a late, late change to this. But I think you would move this as a total project as presented. And then if you choose to, the street committee chooses to make a recommendation at the next meeting to vacate that alley, you would then make that. In the meantime, Dan could plan this with an ad alternate being that north-south alley, but do the rest of the project without that alley in it and then have that as an ad alternate. So if you choose to keep it, it'll get bad and back in. If you choose to vacate the alley, we'll then take it out of this project and we'll have to start the vacation process, which is a several-meeting process.
I like the vacation project. A little rock garden alley, I mean.
Yeah, and the biggest part for mine is we are late enough in the year, we are going to want to get this bid as soon as we can. So I do agree with the making it an alternate that will be part of it and something you can take out prior to the bidding. So just in general, that's, we're hoping to be about a month out or so. So it's not a long timeframe sometimes with city meetings. So we'll keep that in mind when we set the bid date so that we make sure we give you enough time to make those decisions.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I was like, you know, if if our street committee, you know, like if we were like in agreement, we wanted to move, like is it better to just get it all done tonight if we were in agreement? Or or is this something we need to think about? I mean, I didn't know what others thought tonight.
I think it would probably be best to have your meeting, have the discussion on it. We need to talk to city attorney, make sure we're jumping through the right hoops on it and have the right paperwork just to pull this out of our hat at this point and just pass it on the fly is probably not the best.
And we probably need to have a discussion with someone who is concerned on that alleyway anyways.
If it's vacated, there'll have to be a public hearing with everybody in the area will be notified so they can come and speak to or against.
When is the next street committee meeting that this will be discussed?
They're an ad hoc committee. They can call one whenever they want.
Okay.
Whenever it works for everybody else.
So we'll let you guys figure that out and we'll move forward. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, we had an introduction in a second. We'll take a roll call.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes. All right. Thank you all for coming and speaking too, and it's good to hear from everybody. Thank you. Do you have anything else, Dan, Bryce, John?
No, not from us. Thank you. Appreciate it and appreciate being here to help your community make these improvements.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, now we are moving on to the street closure requests. There were, I believe, three in here, all for Riverfest. There's one for the the street closure on Fourth Avenue from five to seven on June ninth. Street Superintendent and Police Chief both approved the closure. Chambers having a cookout, ice cream truck, entertainment. They are also going to paint the American flag on the road with washable paint in front of the movie theater and the street department will bring barricades up for them and pick them up. Should we just do all these motions separate or do you guys want to group them into one? I talked to Stevie, said it's whatever everybody thinks.
I'd be fine grouping them all together because of the event.
Okay, so then the next one is Fourth Avenue and Ninth Street from five to eight thirty on June twelfth for Riverfest. Street Superintendent, Police Chief both approve. Chambers is going to have food trucks there, pedal pull and matchbox races. Street Department will take care of barricades. Next one is a street closure on Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Ninth Street and the parade route requested by the Chamber to close roads for the parade route starting at six P M. on June fourteenth for Riverfest. And those are the three motions, so if we could get a motion to approve all street closure requests for Riverfest from June ninth through the fifteenth.
I'd make a motion to approve these street closure requests for Riverfest from June ninth to the fifteenth.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jason, second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next up, Electric Department, the meter replacement contract. Jason Socora from the Electric Department, I suspect, will speak on that.
Jason Socora, Electric Utility Manager. So what we have is a is a replacement of all electric meters in the city of Wyndham. So these would be an AMI system, which is a two-way communication, so we can talk to the meter, the meter talks back to us. So we went out on, we put bids out on April ninth and the bidding closed April twenty-second at three P M. We only received one qualifying bid. That was from Tanalis Systems for the price at the cost of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Utility Commission met at the last meeting. We did receive two options in that bid. Option one was a partial overlay and then we would do it over a three-year period. The cost on that was right around the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar mark. But through discussion with Utility Commission, it was decided that we should just deploy the whole system right away on fear that costs of equipment would increase over that three-year period, which I've already been notified that there is, would already be a twenty-three thousand dollar cost increase as of June fifteenth on the meters themselves. We will also see a five percent savings moving forward right away with the entire cost on the computer boards that go inside the meters. So that's roughly a thirteen thousand dollar savings that is not included on, in this price or deducted on this price. So you guys have any questions outside of what was in the memo?
This would involve putting different meters in every home?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Just on, just on the outside, so.
Oh, on the outside, okay. And your, your, your people would probably be doing that, right? Or with somebody else?
Nope, this will be done completely by the utility, the electric utility staff. We just went, we went through this process in two thousand and fourteen. It's relatively easy for the electric side. We don't have to get into people's homes. So it's just a knock on the door, putting up some cards on doors the day before we're going to go out into that certain neighborhood and then just switching out the meters. So as I had in the, in the memo, this will, this system will allow us to turn our water meters that we currently have that are AMR into an AMI water meter system, so we won't have to replace those. So we'll be able to get the full usage of the water meters as we're not getting right now as we're reading them as an AMR system, so.
You want to tell them a little bit about what the new AMI meters will do as far as real-time readings, things like that?
Sure, I can, I can dive into that a little bit. So the, the new metering system will allow for, like, at the end of the month, right now, or for, for readouts, for moveouts, new people, the, the staff at City Hall will be able to call those meters and get those readouts. They won't have to send out water and electric staff to get those end of the, or those moveout readings, as we put it. All residential meters will have disconnect available in the meter. So all disconnecting for be it late payment or by customer request can be just turned off. That City Hall staff doesn't have to go out on, onsite. That city hall staff doesn't have to go out on, onsite. Having that ability also is a safety deal. Because as, when we go out to pull those meters, we have to physically pull them and we put on all this safety gear because it's only happened once. But sometimes they, they arc or there's a broken meter socket from a frost eave or something. So it's, it'll help on the safety side of things, just having the meter do the disconnecting. I guess we'll be able to do, in the future, we'll be able to go through load controlling, which we used to do, but it'll be a little better. So if we need to shave peak in the future because of transmission costs going up, we can, we can use these meters to implement our own load controlling of air conditioners, water heaters and things in the future, if, if it, if it comes time to do that. Also, if electric cars ever become more prominent in town, we'll need to do some kind of load controlling on those car chargers because we would overload all residential trans, most residential transformers would be heavily overloaded if everybody had two electric cars in their driveway. So these meters have the capability of helping with that. And then after full deployment, it'll be a conversation we have later as there's cost with it. But there would be a customer portal. So customers could log in, see real-time usage on their electric meters, see when they're using power, see how much power they're using at certain times of the day. There's also the ability to do prepay, which is becoming more popular in some areas. So people could come in, they could prepay ahead of time and, and they could, it would just use up electricity as it goes and it would just subtract. And as they got closer, they'd get a warning saying, you know, their prepaid amount on their meter is running out. That helps some people. Some people have been choosing that option, I guess. It's actually been pretty popular, so. There's a lot of, lot of things that these meters can do, so.
Is there any equipment that has any resale value that you get done replacing?
Our current stuff will have some value, not a lot, as most towns, we're kind of in the middle of getting to the switch out. So most towns are either already switching over to the AMI or are, are thinking about or are in the process of switching out. I mean, there's very small communities that could maybe use some of our meters, but they're going on eleven years old. Talking to some other places, fifteen years is probably when most of these meters are gonna start to fail as they're all electronic. But there, there is, I've had one entity, already got whispers of it probably through the ad we ran, that there would be, we would be replacing our meters and they would possibly be interested in our old, our old meters, but.
So we're just kind of catching up with modern technology also, correct? With the computer in the meter itself?
Correct, yep. No, we're, we're not way behind, but we're getting to the point to where we need, we need to make the upgrade. And with the changes in the electric industry as rapidly as it's changing, like I say, with cars, also with the possibility of time of use, billing, where we would bill certain, different amounts at certain times of the day based on power prices and our demand. So, yeah.
And Jason, when should citizens start expecting this to start changing over and seeing you guys out changing things?
So lead times are probably in the four to five months to get the equipment at this point. And we would be probably looking at a deploy in early fall on some of the hardware to read it and then actually start replacing meters. I would, hopefully, late October, November, through the winter months, probably do most of it. That's when we kind of focused on it last time too, and hopefully be fully deployed by the spring of twenty-twenty-six.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, so then we're looking for a motion to accept the bid from Tantalus to do the entire AMI deployment, which is option two, at a cost of seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Or rather, maybe not to exceed that amount? Or do, do I need to be that specific? Okay, that's the bid. Okay, does anyone?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the electric department for the replacement meters contract.
I'll second.
Motion made by Scott, second by Jenny. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason, great explanation. Up next is ambulance department, billing services contract and mobile radio replacement. If you'd like to speak on that, Kristin.
Kristin, fourth Wyndham ambulance. I'm coming to the city council tonight for changing or switching over to a different billing company for our ambulance service. Each ambulance call that we're out, we have a, our fees that we utilize for our service. A billing company that handles it now is slowly fading out, so we need to switch to a different company. This company is EMS MC. They're out of North Carolina, but they service all over the United States. We've gone through, we have a little committee meeting, I went through and talked to them. They presented their system. It's a huge upgrade from what we have right now. There's a lot of online portals that we can actually see real-time information, invoices, balances, revenue that's coming in, debts that are still owed. So I think it'll be a good move for us to get this implemented. We did send the contracts to Shramal Law Office, the city attorney, to review. He is still in the process of reviewing, hopefully it will be done tomorrow. So with the approval of this, these two contracts, one is for our billing company for our revenue and the, the second contract is for delinquent account, so collections. We would move forward with the project based on his recommendations of any changes that he would want. We're just trying to get it approved now, so when everything's finalized, we can get the ball rolling and not wait for another two weeks or a month for city council to approve it. So we're looking for the recommendation for you guys to approve this, these two contracts with Ron Shramal's recommendations. Yeah, contingent on his recommendations and working with the billing company. There is no cost for us to do this. Our fees are based on net collections. So what we collect, there's a, they charge us a fee on that. And then same with the debt collection. So it's five percent of what net collections is the fee and then twenty percent of debt collections net, net that they collect for us.
I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance department billing service contract per Ron Shramal's OP.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the second project that I have is an upgrade to our mobile and portable radios. Our radios are currently right at the ten years, ten years old and that's kind of what their life expectancy is. Police department and fire has already gone through this project. So when I went through to get quotes and things, I went off their, the information that they had, their radios are, that they got are not available anymore. So we're just going with a little bit different model, very similar. So in that packet, I'm requesting twenty-five radios for EMTs and then one radio that would just have a little bit of different capabilities if we would need encryption in the future. And then four mobiles for our, for our rigs that would have encryption capability if they would ever, the state would move to that for data privacy. Alpha Wireless and Motorola did the quotes for this and it is state contracted quotes. So you can see in the packet the grand total. And then the Alpha Wireless quote of three thousand is for all the programming. So it is two separate quotes. Motorola with the one that's on the screen, hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And then there's a three-thousand-dollar quote from Alpha Wireless for the programming and installation of mobiles. As far as funding for this project, we did receive ambulance aid from the state of Minnesota that would be used to fund this project, so it's not coming out of our budget. We do have, we did receive enough aid to cover this entire project. And then we will have extra funding for a couple additional projects that I'll bring at a different time.
I'll make the motion to accept the radio replacement on that concept.
Yeah, you got the funding. How can we say no? I second it.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for all you guys do and the upgrading of your radios will help you guys immensely keep in contact with all the communications that you guys do and it's time you guys have a, a upgrade. But thank you for all you guys do.
A quick question on the life expectancy of the old stuff, it was about ten years. Is there a similar life expectancy on the new equipment?
It should be similar. There, the model might be gone in five years or, you know, they're always changing models and that, so that's what's happened with the mobiles or the portables that fire department had, they're not making that model. But they're still guaranteed to be serviced for five years from when they stop making that model. So, you know, if they would stop, this current model is the newest one that they have. So in two years, if they would switch to a new model, it would still be serviced five years beyond that point.
And I think the ones you have are pushing well past ten, you're probably closer to fifteen, aren't you?
I don't remember, I know I looked. Yeah, it's over ten, but I didn't look at the exact date. And then it's, there's, they still work, but it's harder to get the maintenance on it. After that five-year ending, they don't guarantee that they can reprogram them. We did get five, four or five radios from actually Hennepin County, probably four years ago through emergency management, just because we had twenty-three, twenty-four EMTs at that time. And if something broke, then, you know, we had a couple spares. So I do have a few extra ones that will probably have to be returned, but it's, it's this time.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And Kristin, I'm sorry, would you like to accept this totally out of order of our agenda? But is the EMS proclamation week? Thank you, sorry. All right, up next, Jeff Dana with the telecom department.
Good evening, mayor, council members and city administrator. I'm Jeff Dana, telecom department general manager. What I have before you tonight for an action item is the telecom video service rate increase. The recommended action options requested, telecom commission recommends that the city council adopt the following rate increase effective on or before June first, twenty-twenty-five for basic, expanded basic and digital video services packages. Monthly subscription rates, fee change to increase of fifteen percent on each of the tiers there. The background on this is that we added the Twins TV at the additional expense and other network subscription rate increases as far as like the networks. We pay for ESPN, we pay for, you know, Disney, various rates on different ones and packages. Those increase every year per contracts and we have not done a adjustment for quite a while. So with these increases, it's necessary to increase our subscriber video rate to better coverage the programming costs. The telecom commission met on April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five and reviewed, discussed current video programming costs, not including labor and operational costs. The telecom commissioners voted unanimously to recommend the city council to increase the basic, expanded basic and digital monthly video service subscriber rates by fifteen percent. The fiscal impact is the increased video service rate fees will generate revenue for subscription programming costs so that they're covered a little bit better.
And this rate increase is fairly modest considering the history and how many years have gone by before the rates have gone up. And it doesn't actually cover all the costs yet, does it?
No, this is strictly the programming side of it. Like I said, we have labor and other rates, the utility, electricity, you know, not, none that's factored in. We're just gonna try to get the program costs covered a little bit more as we work on our transition to the streaming packages.
Jeff, does some of the, like the sports channel or your, your Twins channel, could you package that off to a different, so not everybody that has to pay for that if they don't watch it?
No, you're contractually obligated to have it in your largest package. You cannot have it in other packages or à la carte. If you so wished, you could, as a single-entity person, you could have a twenty-dollar, nineteen-ninety-nine dollar a month online access to the Twins TV if you wanted. So other companies are not opting to basically have Twins TV. The content is only pre-game, post-game, actual games and then some previous recorded games. It's not always on, you know? Kind of like the old cable TV where you'd, at midnight it would go off-air. They just have a screen protector thing bounce around if they're not showing content. I hope that they get more content on there and I hope that the Twins do better. And, you know, it's, not all programmers out there are adopting that channel at this point, so.
I know we haven't raised the rates for a while, but I'm just afraid if we raise them too high, that we're gonna lose a lot of people. Because I'm afraid that we, some people aren't getting what they're thinking, they're getting a value out of it because we keep getting less channels on there with more rates.
Well, you also can see any absorbing these rates at a loss or do what I'm supposed to do to, you know, make that an enterprise fund. Right now, we're floating that video service with other services to keep things, you know, on the level. So this is not much of a rate increase compared to, the last time we had an increase was twenty-seventeen and that was just a premium channel increase. But on the packages, on a triple play, it's like a fifty-dollar discount if you have a triple play package, fifty bucks. If you have a double play, that's a twenty-dollar discount. So there are some discounts on the packages. It's up to the individual if they want to take advantage of the packages or not.
And when do you expect, we'll probably hear more definitive news on the, on the rollout of the streaming services, when that?
As we know more, we'll bring things out, but right now, we're still working on the gen-two side of things. So I don't have a date, they're still getting some of the bugs worked out of it, I assume. Another company's supposed to start their transition, so. So once they probably get through the stumbling blocks, then it'd be a lot easier for us to bring that onboard. I was able to preview the Generation 2 interface to it. It's a lot better than the first one. So that's why they wanted us to wait was because this one was a lot more polished. But right now, the only way we can look at it is the national connection. We don't have any local fees or anything on that because it's still being worked on. Supposed to be able to have it with the Roku Ultras and Roku device also. They're going to be adding the iPhone, iOS, Apple and Android capabilities onto that also.
Where are you at with upgrading all the citizens in town with the new system?
Okay, I'm here with this rate increase. Is that something you want me to answer that's not on what we're discussing?
Sure.
We're at 86%.
Okay. Any idea how long it's going to take to finish?
No, but we are working on it as fast as we can with the weather, et cetera. Things are nice now, so we're trying to get as many converted owners as we can. If there is, if we get to the streaming, somebody needs more bandwidth with those packages, then we can actually go and cherry pick those customers to get them upgraded quicker. So we're working on certain areas of town basically to be able to do this. And it's all been done by staff, so.
Does anyone else have any questions or if, if not, then we'll take an introduction to the resolution establishing rates, charges and fees for the telecommunications enterprise fund?
I'll make a motion that we increase the rates 15%.
I would second the resolution.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll have a roll call.
Sherman.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
No.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
All right. That was a 3-2. The resolution is introduced. Resolution is passed. Do you have anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up. I think, well.
I, I think Island Park is next on your agenda.
Yep.
Maybe John will talk about that unless Donna wants to talk about the log cabin. Are you going to store financial records down there or what's your plan?
Do you want the cabin, Donna?
There is a loft.
John Katzenberg is going to give us a cabin update on the cabin at Island Park. Welcome, John.
Good evening, John Katzenberg, Street and Parks Superintendent, my Hillary said. I got a letter of intent from the Fort Belmont. I'll read it to you. Ken Cruz has been with Fort Belmont for over 37 years, involved every aspect of Fort from the managing it at the old location to presenting, presiding as president until turning over to the reins to Craig this spring. I welcome the opportunity to receive and preserve the cabin and use it in the represents the history of early homesteaders settlers as they moved in our area. I feel it is important to both of the citizens of Jackson County as it was originally located in and also the citizens of Wyndham who, for the past part, remember it being in the park for most of their lifetimes. We would like to preserve it for future generations as we are still in the process of finalizing the exact location for it, but plans for moving it are underway. Please advise us of any other concerns you may have with the move. Thank you, Ken Cruz, past president of Fort Belmont. Any questions or anything?
Well, I'm, I'm very thankful that they stepped forward and thank you for all your chasing down the details and really pursuing an actual honest answer and getting it all done. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you guys.
So I guess what are the details? Like, I mean, I'm hearing that they want it. I don't hear a location. I don't hear that they're saying they're paying half. Have they secured their half of the funding? Like I, I don't hear details in there.
Yep, that's kind of short on some details. Like say it's a letter of intent saying that they are taking it. Like I said, I'm going to meet the mover halfway and I believe Sean Colbert was going to have some money getting set aside for donations and everything to kind of take up the rest of the moving costs.
I have spoken to Sean and I know that he has spoken to the mover and has kind of a budget in mind and he didn't want to do all of the fundraising. So he reached out to someone that is schooled in fundraising and they are planting right now and I think had a recent surgery. I think what might be appropriate is to kind of put them, give them a timeline as to, unless you have more details from him than I have.
Nope. Like he says in here, we are still in the process of finalizing the exact location for it, but plans for moving it are underway. So I haven't got a pinpoint date or anything like that, but I know the mover guy, I've seen him in town the other day and everything, so I'm assuming they're kind of checking it out a little bit, but I can reach out to him again here shortly and see what's going on for a timeline.
Okay, I'm just looking at, is that going to be, you know, when you're going to be starting to work on other projects down at Island Park, I don't want that in the way or, you know, like we have other things going on down at Island Park, so we need to make sure that this is out of the way and we're not causing, you know, people being on top of each other down there.
You and me both, yes. It'd be nice to get this moving as fast as we can and get it relocated, so. I'll pursue that a little bit and kind of push them a little bit, see if we got a timeline.
I'm just glad it found a new home.
And I'm also glad that it, it took a while for somebody to finally step up to the plate and say, we're going to do something because it came awful close to being done. Because I'm one of the people that said it was going to be done. So I'm glad, John, you held out and worked on this and got it taken care of, but I'm also wishing people would step up to the plate when it's time to step up to the plate instead of making everybody go through all these pain to get this thing taken care of. Because it did, it weighed on a lot of different people, a lot of different entities in our city, which we, we do stand up to the plate and take it, but it's just one of those things that unfortunately some things had to happen before it had to, but I'm glad it's taken care of and I thank you. And I thank everybody that got involved with this. Thank you.
Yes, very appreciative of everybody in the backgrounds and everything else working and especially for Fort Belmont taking up and moving it back into Jackson County where it came from.
Thanks for everything, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Donna, it's your time to shine.
She's just so excited.
Donna's here with hiring recommendations for an administrative assistant.
Yes, Amy, Amy Kelly submitted her resignation April 10th. She went to the Wyndham Area School District for a secretary position out there. So we did post the position internally and externally. We received seven applications and we selected five candidates for interviews. After interviewing the selected candidates, like to recommend hiring Kaylee Grove for our administrative assistant position. Kaylee's been in her current position at Toro for 15 years and she also has nine years of retail and customer service experience. So she's excited to just start a new career and we are excited to have her start. So I think she'll be a good addition to our staff.
I would make a motion to accept the hiring of Kaylee Grove for administrative assistant position.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion?
I am, just wondering. Everybody seems to be hiring. Do you have a specific chain of command in the office? Who, who will this lady be working for? You or Steve or?
Me, me. Steve is my boss. Steve's my supervisor. I supervise the staff.
I know he's a good boss.
Yes, he reminds me every day.
I just want to say thank you for the stuff you go through to get these people in line and taking the extra and get, you know, getting help here. Because it ain't easy getting some of these positions filled.
You know, it's not. There's, there's a lot of options as far as, you know, I mean, any more McDonald's pays really well. So it is hard to find, it's hard to find people with experience and people that want to, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot sometimes to deal with people coming in that, you know, maybe can't pay their bill or they're mad and they're close to being shut off and, you know, we do have some options, but we don't have a lot of options to, to help people with, with that, but.
And your guys' offices, the first ones, they take it all, all day long. So like I said, I want to thank you guys for the hard work and understanding that guys do for the citizens of Wyndham.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Donna. Next up is a hiring recommendation of a seasonal employee for summer park and rec programs. Tim, do you want to speak on that?
This is Tim Hogan, Park and Rec Director. Just a annual hiring of, this would be for field prep and maintenance position. We lost our last employee last year who was in college. So this would be a new addition to our seasonal summer field prep and maintenance position for summer rec. We were hoping to have an additional list of summer rec employees. However, we're still fine tuning and finalizing that, so we're just going to go ahead and hopefully get this position approved. And then at next meeting, we will have a lot more of the summer youth recreation program individuals for approval at that time.
I'll make a motion to hire the seasonal work for summer park and rec programs.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick addition to this, just for public and council information, we are obtaining a very well-staffed group up with our recreational programs between Alex Fink, the high school baseball coach with his assistant, Colby Level, and now Jake Tower, all former college athletic individuals who are giving an exceptional dedication and work to promoting and, and strengthening these youth groups. So to have all three of these individuals involved with our youth recreational programs is, is huge because they dedicate a lot of time into making sure that we have a great program for these kids to participate in the summer. So I just want to send out kudos to these individuals and all of the staff that helps make these programs successful. So, thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, next up are mayor appointments for the hospital board. And on the agenda is to reappoint Rick Fredrickson and Dan Ortman to the Wyndham Area Health Board of Directors. They have just completed their terms and the council recently approved the board's bylaws changed to make the terms five years in length. So these terms would start May 1st and run through, May 1st, 2025 and run through April 30th of 2030. I have spoken to both Rick and Dan and they are very grateful for their appointments on those boards. They really enjoy it and they are looking forward to another term. So I would ask that there is a motion to approve the reappointments of Rick Fredrickson and Dan Ortman to the Wyndham Area Health Board of Directors.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Fredrickson and Ortman to the hospital, to the health, as health, on the health directors.
I'll second it.
It's been a long night, huh? All right, we have motion made by Jason, second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Does anyone have anything for new business? Under old business, we have to select a date for a MINDOT workshop for the roundabout concepts and to select a date for the city facility tour part two or and/or three, four, five, however many it takes. I don't know if we want to kind of think about these together. Did you guys come with dates or ideas?
I think for the MINDOT one, we had kind of talked about, you know, the possibility of either doing a standalone session or have an earlier console work session. The 10th of June is the second Tuesday of the month. That would be an off Tuesday if that's of interest. Or the 17th, which is your regularly scheduled meeting. MINDOT preferred the second meeting of the month versus that first meeting of the month. So you could either meet at like 5 o'clock on the 17th and then run straight through to the 6:30 normal meeting and then go from there or have a second night. It doesn't have to be the 10th, but that's just an off Tuesday, which you guys generally schedule as busy, so.
I do. I will be gone on the 17th for sure.
I already tentatively put it on my calendar for June 10th, so I'm free.
I kind of like the idea of the 10th, just because I am worried that an hour and a half is not going to be enough. Do you like the 10th? You like the 10th, Jenny? Dennis, Jason, Jim, like the 10th? Should we? I mean, is five, but does everyone work till 5? What time would you guys like to start?
Don't we have a committee meeting on that night, housing, planning?
At 7.
Planning Commission?
Seven.
At 7.
Yeah, I think you would be out by 7 o'clock.
Okay.
If we start at 5? So we'll set that and either you or I or we'll contact Mary. Okay, and so we'll shoot for 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 10th, right here. We need a motion and a second for that.
I'll make a motion for Tuesday, June 10th at 5 o'clock for the DOT work session.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, select a date for the city facility tour part two, which we had discussed doing another bigger day.
Again, either pick like a four hour block to go one day or pick them off maybe one at a time after regular council meetings or however you would like to do that. We had the May 13th meeting tentatively scheduled, but that's when the schools election is, so we couldn't meet that night. So I guess up to you what you want to look at for another date. I hope you found the tours informational and interesting. So I think we have eight more places to visit, so they won't be quite as long as the other ones. We hit some of the ones that had more extensive things, but, or something new. But I guess it's really up to you how you want to do these.
Does anyone have any input? Is a bigger day on May 27th an option for anyone? Do you think, are we going to need like a longer day on an off Tuesday and then possibly a couple, after one meeting or something?
We'll have to see how, see how far we get through, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, we'll schedule them out, but I, I'm anticipating you might have one or two that we'd have to knock out after, if you do a four, three or four-hour block, depends on your schedule. Um, that twenty-seventh, that is Memorial Day week, just FYI.
Yeah, okay.
I will actually be gone on the twenty-seventh, I'm just telling you. But, but the other department heads are very capable of guiding the tour.
They are. So, do we throw a couple in, like after the next meeting to get, uh, do we need these done ideally by?
There, there's no timeframe on them. Um, ideally, it would be nice to have them done before you get into budgets and you won't get into those till October, so you, you have some time. If you wanna do them in June or July, that's, that's okay too.
Should we maybe hit like telecom, library, or those in the area after the next meeting and then go from there? On the twentieth?
The twentieth. It will do a couple right after the regular meeting. We'll just essentially recess from here, reconvene at the library or telecom or emergency services building or the PD office. We have a lot of options.
Yeah.
And then you can see how many you get knocked out and what you wanna do after that.
Does that sound legit to everybody? Okay, so we'll do some of them after the next council meeting on Tuesday, May twentieth?
Yeah, I think if we waited till into June for going out to the hospital, because then we make sure, you know, it'll be open and we could do the full hospital tour and then we can do like the arena, you know, the ones that we'd have to actually drive for. The arena, the community center, the hospital, we could take a different day to do those.
The hospital open house is scheduled for the nineteenth of June, so that is open, that's gonna be open to the public. You can certainly participate in that one. Um, I can't have you as a council do it that day because that's Juneteenth, that's a state and federal holiday, so you're prohibited from having a meeting.
No, I'm just saying, let's, let's schedule a council tour of the arena, the community center and the hospital. Those three, because we have to drive the same day, but let's do those three in June because we know we have to drive to those three locations. But the, the hos, or the library, the emergency management building, telecom and law enforcement, those four we can walk to. So, that makes sense to do them on the twentieth, if we can get four in a night, depending on how fast they talk and how fast I can walk.
It depends how fast the council is.
How fast I walk and how fast they talk. We get electric scooters.
Walkers.
So, we're planning to do law enforcement EMS, telecom, library on May twentieth after the meeting and then tentatively for June, maybe like the seventeenth? We can talk to that. Oh, not the seventeenth? Okay. Well, we'll come back to that, but is the community center, the arena and the hospital, does that wrap it up then?
We hadn't talked about the city hall building or the annex or whatever you wanna call this building.
Okay.
As well, so that would be the only other one I think we've got, 'cause, uh, if you're doing community center, arena. Am I missing one? I thought I heard something from the back, are we missing one?
Liquor store? Yeah. Liquor store.
That's gotta be on the driving tour.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna stick right now with May twentieth for law enforcement EMS, telecom, library and then we'll go from there. Great.
And is there any option of getting the hospital thing, um, before the public tour? I mean, how much before could we do that? Is that even a, who would know that?
We'd have to talk to the hospital to see.
Bet we could find out. Are you gone like just June seventeenth?
I'm gone somewhere on the fourteenth, fifteenth through the eighteenth or so.
Okay, okay. We could check with them. Okay. Anyone else have any feedback on that? All right. Council comments? Does someone wanna volunteer to start? Scott?
Uh, Katie Wim hit it pretty good the last time I heard them talk about it. Please don't put your stuff out until it is time. We got stuff blowing all over in neighborhoods, people running through stuff. Just be courteous of what other people put out and don't make a big mess for them and now that it is getting nice out, people are out walking, walking their animals. Pick up after your animals if they happen to leave product in other people's yards and watch out for kids and people out on little strollers and stuff like that and kids out on bicycle, 'cause they're not really paying much attention, they're just enjoying the good weather. So, let's try to keep each, each and individual safe around here and let's take care of each other like we always do. And I thank you all for everything Wyndham does for Wyndham people, I appreciate it.
Do you wanna speak, Jenny?
Sure. Um, I wanna wish my mom a happy Mother's Day and all the moms out there a happy Mother's Day and it looks like it's gonna be nice weather for Mother's Day this weekend. And I suppose some people are, you know, happy for like, isn't it like maybe the fishing opener or something too? Um, and then, um, on top of the citywide cleanup coming up, which is May seventeenth, which is still out there a bit, um, and I'm probably speaking to people that aren't the people that need to be hearing this, but it's ten items that they're picking up in front of your house, only ten items. So, if you drive around town, there are plenty of people that have way more than ten items. Ten, that is it. Um, so if you have more than ten, you need to start pairing it down. Um, and then, so people know, you haul your stuff to Teagle's Park. So, Cottonwood Lake, that is where the dumpsters will be between seven AM and noon on that Saturday, May tenth. You haul your stuff there, you can haul more than ten items, but you take it there and you drop it off there, however many items you want, but ten is all they're gonna take. And if you have more than ten, your pile is just gonna sit there, nobody is gonna pick it up. It will sit there forever and then the police will come and give you a ticket because you have too much crap in your front yard. So, do not have more than ten items in your front yard. And if your neighbor has more than ten, tell them. Your stuff's gonna sit there forever and no one's gonna pick it up. No more than ten, please. Um, no electronics, no appliances, no tires, no building products, like do not have that stuff out there and I've, I'm seeing it, so that's why I'm saying it. I'm seeing the stuff out there that will not get picked up, so don't put it there. And that stuff will not get picked up down at, at Teagle's Park or at Cottonwood Lake either. Don't take it there. That stuff goes out to the landfill. Um, so, ten items, that's it. Enough said. Um, and then again, a reminder, the fire department, their community appreciation day, um, coming up and that is again on Saturday, May seventeenth too, so you can haul your garbage down and then you can go to the fire department between eleven to two is when they're serving the lunch and then they're having their raffle drawing as well, so you can get rid of all your stuff and then go have lunch at the fire department. Have a good weekend.
Dennis, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Jason, do you have something?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to remember how many items. Ten, 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 ten items, okay. Um, I don't usually do this, but I wanna wish my wife a happy birthday. She's twenty-two yet again.
Jim, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, but I don't know if I even wanna say it, because, you know, uh, fifteen percent, I know I, my phone's probably already ringing. Uh, fifteen percent cable going up, the programs, whatever. The first one's gonna say, well, I only got three percent in my social security. How come you guys gotta get, uh, just it, it, and we have to figure our budget. I, I, it's kinda irritating to me, 'cause I know, I know, I hope everybody else's phone is ringing also. So, that's all I have, except for happy Mother's Day to all you mothers out there.
And I just want to, um, touch on, we had facilities tour last week, was that was last week? And it was super awesome and just thank everybody again for that. Um, I did connect with each department head and do plan to, well, they all said I could go hang with them for a day. Hopefully they were serious, but it was just really neat to see and so I thank them for that and looking forward to junk week. There is a great graphic up in the hallway there going into city coun, or to city hall or the offices, administrative office. So, maybe we could all really get out there and share that it is bilingual. I think maybe that is some of the problem with seeing, I mean, I'm seeing some of the piles you're seeing too. I don't know what it is, but maybe we could just really help spread that word so that people aren't left with piles of junk and I think that's all I've got. So, we'll adjourn the meeting by unanimous consent.